I'd like to call the April 4, 2023 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday. Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Fanslaw, Kluk, Stube, Engberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We have two presentations tonight, one exciting and one not so. The exciting one is the audit presentation.[48.12][48.12](Laughter). And the other one is the swearing in of new fire chief. So, we'll start with the fire chief. Chief Gotch wants to come up. I just want to share a little bit. I think I shared a little bit at the last council meeting that Papillion was really blessed to have multiple strong candidates that went through the process. They were all proven professionals. They were true leaders. They've got a passion for their profession and they wanted to continue to serve. Civil service, who I know at least one member is here, got two, Carla Rupiper and Gene Jaworski, both on the Civil Service Commission. I want to thank you for that. They managed the first part of the selection process. So, the commission evaluated each of every candidate that came forward and then the ones that made the final cuts. They were evaluated through written questions, a formal presentation, roundtable exercise, and a panel interview. Every one of those areas was scored independently and then they were scored in the aggregate. And the top three candidates out of that process, then the Civil Service Commission gave those names to me and then that's what I was able to make my selection from. I had the privilege, the candidate might not think it was a privilege, but we spent all day together. It was a really long day for the candidates. And it included a series of open panel discussions. And depending on the panel, we had some important community partners that we trust and work with a lot. We had the Mutual Fire Organization. And for those that aren't familiar with FIRE, the city of Papillion runs FIRE for the city of La Vista, the city of Papillion, and the rural fire district. And the Mutual Fire Organization is basically the board of directors over that, so representatives from all three organizations. And so, they were part of the interview. The Papillion Fire leadership was part of it. Deputy Chief Jones participated. And then, the leadership from the union, the IFF Local 3767 was part of it. So, we had management and rank and file as part of that. But most important, there was an opportunity for you as the council members to participate and visit with all three of them as well. So, long day and I just want to thank you for giving of your time of that. And in the civil service process, I mentioned, I don't think I mentioned, Mr. Gotch scored the highest on every individual category and in the aggregate. So, he was the top candidate from the civil service process. He's a military veteran, Navy. He's got a 30-year career with the city of Omaha Fire Department. He has a degree in fire protection technology and a bachelor's degree and he also earned a master's degree in public administration. He recently retired from the Omaha Fire Department, what, just two weeks ago, two, three weeks ago? So, got a small break. But the last 11 years, he was a battalion chief in Omaha. Most of his career was very strong on the fire suppression side, but also spent six years in fire investigations. And through that, served as expert witness in both civil and criminal proceedings in court. He is only one, I believe, of six individuals in the state of Nebraska that are credentialed officers through the Center of Public Safety Excellence as a chief fire officer. That's a national accreditation and there's only six in Nebraska that have that. He's a certified instructor for the Nebraska Fire Service, certified as an arson investigator instructor at the Nebraska Law Enforcement Training Center. And then, to help to grow the next generation, he's for, I think, the last 18 years, been a contract instructor and lecturer at both University of Nebraska and at Metro Community College in the fire services program there. I think how I summarize what I learned about him, a professional with a proven record of investing in people so that they can be empowered to fulfill the mission of the organization, a developer of next-generation leaders, a mentor. If I had to do one word besides mentor, I think I would say coach. Value-driven individual that's humble and approachable, yet always professional while developing others to continually improve, both individually and as a team with a mission. So, again, I want to thank the Civil Service Commission for all of the work they did to give us great candidates. And I want to thank the other two candidates for their willingness to serve and especially thank the council for your unanimous vote at the last council meeting affirming the selection. I'd like to invite Chief Boz up for a minute, maybe to share his perspective. We won't talk about Chief Boz tonight. That'll be at the next council meeting.[319.12][319.12](Laughter). But it is a transition and I think you've got a unique perspective.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I asked Mayor if I could just say a few words about Chief Gotch. We've known each other for several years now and I have found him to be, our firefighters will, this will sound familiar to them because we've talked about this often, he is humble, hungry, and smart. He is, there's a book by Patrick Lencioni that describes the ideal team player and Chief Gotch fits that ideal team player. He's equal parts humble, hungry, he's anxious for the job. During the last several days that we've been together, the brain might be a little overloaded, but he'll eventually, that'll sink in and he'll still remain hungry. And he is smart in the terms of intellect and both people smarts. So, I am very confident that he's going to do a great job. I'm actually excited that he's going to take the department to places I couldn't even dream of taking it and that'll be with your help along the way. So, I wholeheartedly endorse Chief Gotch and very excited for him. Thank you, Mayor.
Just one other thing, it was not part of the selection process, but he is a Papillion resident as well. So, I think that's gravy on top. He's not just coming to a job, but he's serving his own community. So, you want to do the oath?
Absolutely.
It's a long one. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Robert Gotch.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the state of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of fire chief.
Perform the duties of fire chief.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor am a member of.
Nor am a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.[499.12][499.12](Applause). Just going to pin the badge. I'll have him maybe introduce family members and then I'm going to turn the podium over to you and let you share for a bit as well.
Absolutely. So, pin badge first?
Go ahead and then introduce.
And this is my wife, everyone. She's going to pin the badge on. This is my very best.[533.12][533.12](Applause). I'll just make a few quick introductions. So, you saw my lovely wife of 29 years and my mom. You can stand up for a minute.
Hey, Rob, do you want to pull the mic over just so we can get it for the camera?
Sure. So, my wife and my mom, she just had her knees redone, so she's looking great, right, Mom?[577.12][577.12](Laughter). So, I'll be very short, council members. I see my life as I look back through this process and I will agree, Mayor, this was one of the toughest processes I've ever been in as an applicant for any such position. But as I evaluate the experiences, growing up in Omaha, Nebraska, attending Benson High School, going into the Navy, being a second-generation firefighter, my dad being an encouragement in that, I wish he was with us today. And then, the 30 years of experience of going up through the ranks has really prepared me to be the fit for this job and I have the most confidence in all of those things that have led me here. And I am very grateful for the confidence that all of you have in me, for the confidence of you members of the organization. And what that does for me, as Chief Boz says, it makes me want to continue building that trust and confidence in all of you. And I'm ready to work hard to move the organization, the department, into the future for wherever that goes I want to be a part of. So, I am very thankful for all of you and this participation in this process. So, thank you all.
Congratulations. And everybody from the fire department that's here as well, thanks for your patience. Big, it's a big change, but I think we've got the right person to navigate it. So, thank you for all the support of the chiefs as well and for Chief Jones and the battalion chief. So, appreciate it. Next is the exciting part, audit presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Shreck. I'm a partner with Forvis, the CPA firm that conducted the city's audit. I usually try to manage expectations to a really low level for the audit presentation. So, the mayor has set us up for some exciting news for you here today. I think that might be the first time an audit presentation's been called exciting in my career. So, I will be brief, though. I won't take you through all of the details that we spoke to the audit committee earlier today, but did want to present to you the results of the 2022 audit. We conducted that audit in accordance with all of the related auditing standards that are required and we are happy to report to you that we have expressed an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. So, the financial statements that Nancy will talk through shortly were, are presented fairly in all material respects. That's exactly the result that we all want to see. We also are required to communicate any significant findings, if we have any, so material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. I'm happy to report that we have none of those to bring to your attention today. So, that is also a very good result, exactly what we all hope to see. One of the last things I want to mention is Nancy's about to go through a little bit of information related to those financial statements. That set of financial statements has been submitted to the Government Finance Officers' Association. They have a certificate of achievement program. The city has successfully filed for that and received that certificate for 12 years now, I believe is, or this is the 12th year that it's being submitted. So, that is a high accomplishment as well. That's a voluntary program. It's not something that's required. So, that is something to be proud of and we encourage that to continue. On that note, one of our recommendations this year was to consider the additional purchase of some software to help in that process. This is a very large document and there's a lot of information that's really, really good for users of the financial statements to have, but it can be challenging to put that together. So, the process is not broken. I don't want to make you think that there's anything wrong with it, but as we're looking for ways to help save time and resources, that's actually one that might be very helpful for the city. So, we wanted to bring that to everyone's attention as well. Turn it to Nancy.
Okay. And I'm going to keep this very brief. So, one of the first changes between last year and this year was when you guys adopted a resolution, or ordinance, creating the Papillion Landing as a fund, as well as Papio Bay as a fund, so that they are now shown separately in the fund statements of the financials again. We had always kept them segregated internally, but now it will be reported that way, which I believe was always our intent and important to us. I would probably, everybody has been given a copy of the report. It's very lengthy. For those in the audience, it is online on the website under the finance department. It's also linked on the tonight's agenda. So, high level is throughout the fiscal year, we reduced our long-term debt, our bond debt by $6.8 million. Our valuation, of course, continues to grow, providing financial stability for the city. One of the largest transactions recorded at fiscal year-end this year is the fact that the state has notified us of a $42 million sales tax rebate claim made by at least one incentive company. And they will start to withhold sales tax from the city of Papillion in the month of December of '23. Their intent is to take that back over a 12-month period. I believe that's going to be somewhat of a challenge as some of the sales tax revenues from the incentive company drop off. So, we'll see sales tax receipts for two months next fiscal year and then we will be supplementing our operations with the sales tax, which we have set aside, knowing full well that they were in excess of our projections and a result of those incentive companies. And we had policies in place to set those aside to assure our financial stability going forward. So, we are going to see that forethought in action the next fiscal year. I guess if anybody has questions, I'll take questions. The management MDNA that starts on page 15 is more of a verbal summary of what happened throughout the year, if you want to cruise through that.
On that sales tax, I don't want to explain that, but more for education for the public that watches this. The way sales tax works is the local sales tax by the merchants is remitted to the state Department of Revenue and we do not get a copy of that report. And then, the Department of Revenue takes that and they aggregate what's owed to the local jurisdiction, the city of Papillion, and they send us a check, one check with no backup documentation. We don't know what retailers make that up and so, really, there is no way to audit it up until a few years ago. Papillion, La Vista, and Bellevue, and Gretna and Springfield, we went together and we were able to get the legislature to make one change and it took us about five years to make this simple change. We now have a right to go down to the state and look on their computer and we can inquire if a certain retailer paid sales tax to us. But you have to actually look for that retailer, so we're not going to go look at every retailer in the area. So, really, what we have to do is spot check some of the large ones. But then, the individual that goes down to look at it can't come back and tell us what they saw. It's a goofy state law. It's all about confidentiality. So, literally, there is no way to audit our sales tax. And so, when we would get changes in the number, an anomaly, maybe there was a spike in sales tax, we don't know if that's legitimate. Was it sales tax that should have been paid to another jurisdiction? Was it a big sale that occurred? Is it ours? Can we use it? And there was, the first time, I think, we realized how bad the situation. And then, there's the economic development programs where the state, as an incentive to businesses to come to Nebraska, will give back our local sales tax. Nebraska Advantage is a common name for it, but it used to be the way they take it is your next sales tax check would just kind of disappear. You wouldn't get a check one month. Well, where'd it go? Well, we gave it back to the person that wanted it back. And well, who was that? Well, we can't really tell you. So, a lot of confidentiality around it. They gave us literally no ability to plan. And so, we worked at the legislature to make another change and that's the one now where at least they give us a little bit of notice and take it over time. But again, it was really Papillion, La Vista, Gretna, Springfield, and Bellevue that made that change at the legislature, at least to start getting a little bit of notice and planning. But Nancy, I really want to give you kudos. During that whole process, we realized that if there's an anomaly in the sales tax, a spike, we should at least on our own, even though the state won't tell us and there's no way to audit, we should at least be smart enough to say, well, there's an anomaly. Maybe a business made a big sale. Maybe one day they're going to come ask for their money back. Maybe we should reserve some of that. And Nancy did a lot of work and has built a model over time where we look at our anomalies and kind of a trailing 12 months of trends and what's going on. And then, through a council policy that you all adopted, part of our cash management policy, we now have a formal policy then that says, when we see that anomaly based on Nancy's model, we sweep that into a reserve account. And then, it's sitting there for then the moment when the state does rebate some of our sales tax. We now are, have lost revenue, but we don't have to panic because we've been, we've been building up a reserve for that moment. So, Nancy, a lot of work over a long period of time, but I think it shows the wisdom and I really want to thank you for all you do.
And actually, I will say on the back in the statistical tables, table four will show, it gives a 10-year synopsis of our revenue expenditures and the governmental funds and it will show that sales tax, how it was growing, how it spiked, and then, you know, when we recorded the payable this year, it dropped dramatically.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah. Nancy, you indicated that we set money aside. Obviously, we know the commitment from the state is $42 million. Did we set aside that amount or less than that?
We still, so, we had that set aside and on the financials, we still have, I think it's, we still have short of $35 million set aside. And I'm quite certain that the majority of the 42 is one incentive company. I'm positive we have two. I think we may have three. That information's really hard to dissect from the state also and when a lot of the Senate programs are signed, they're signed with their original code names before they ever go public. So, it's a challenge to match up who's who. But...
One note to show the importance of that reserve fund. There was one city in Nebraska that because of the rebate program, they went an entire year without sales tax that they had budgeted. So, somebody here says, you're reserving $35 million? Yeah, because it's going to get clawed back. So, Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay. Just building off of his, if I understand. So, we have to give, we're going to get cut, they're going to cut us back $43,000. $43 million.
$43 million. Yes.
Okay. Is that part of the economic development incentive program?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, in theory, somebody built, somebody built something big, Facebook or something, and as a result of that, we received a whole lot of sales tax.
Correct.
And they're just saying, well, okay, now that money goes back to whoever built something big. And in theory, it's a wash.
Right. I mean, once they, yeah, they had to meet their qualifications under their incentive program. They've done that. They've filed with the state and the state's reviewed all their sales tax records to determine that this is an amount refundable to them. But, I mean, the example, when I, it's our tiny numbers. There's my sales tax. So, in 2018, we were at, and this, I'm going to refer to the, just the cent and a half, not the additional cent, half-cent. So, we were at $11 million in sales tax. We grew to 13.6 in 2019. In 2020, we recorded receipts of $36.6 million. So, and then, $31 million in '21. And actually, this year's, without recording that payable, we would have been at almost, we would have been close to $46 million.
But we took that money, that extra money, put it aside, and now, we're just going to, the state's going to, we don't have to pay it back. The state just doesn't give us...
No, we're not, the state just doesn't give us, so we will use that which we had restricted to fund our operations as we go forward at the level that we would have anticipated sales tax, normal sales tax.
Okay. And that's when you say we'll fund it. What do we do? We just transfer that 43, $43 million out of the reserve into the appropriate budget that would have otherwise been sales tax?
Yes, for the, with the exception that I'm not going to schedule it at the $42 million, I don't think they're going to get it back in one year. I mean, we, we wouldn't, I would not have projected sales tax to be $42 million next year.
I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out if, I think, I'm trying to figure out whether we really lose anything and in theory, we don't lose anything. I guess I'll, I'll just say I'm, I'm with those people who think that that sales tax, that method of removing, of giving people back sales tax after they have made an economic development, that is not why they made the economic development. And I'm with the, I know that, I'm just making a speech here. I'm with the people who say, hey, welcome, thank you, legislature of Nebraska. The people of Papillion now have to, have to tighten their belt or something, use money that they love, that luckily we'd set aside because somehow or other, you gave some mega-billion person money back that was pretty much meaningless to them.
We would, we would have been hurt dramatically if we didn't have the self-discipline to reserve those funds, though, which I think probably most cities in Nebraska are not doing this reserve. I think some are learning from us because we do talk about it at a state level and we offer Nancy's model up, but they would, we would have been really hurt if we wouldn't have been self-reserving.
Yeah. I guess I'll just make a little speech that I think the legislature, when they adopted that economic development plan, that incentive, they didn't give a damn what it meant to us, period. But thank you. We're smarter than, we're smarter than the most of them and we're not going to suffer because of it. Thank you, Nancy.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah. I just got one more clarifying question. So, the amount of money that whoever this company is paid, sales tax, they paid the 7% sales tax at that time. The only thing that we're paying back to the state is the five and a half, correct?
No, we're paying our one and a half. We're paying our portion.
No, we're paying our two.
Our two, gotcha.
So, there's like, and of that 42, about 10 million is coming out of the additional half-cent.
Okay.
That we had voted for recreational.
And as long as we're, okay, thank you. And as long as we're on a rant about the legislature, I think they're taking the 2%. It's actually a constitutional question because the implementation of that one and a half was a vote of the people locally. And so, the people voted on that for a specific purpose. Now, the state's taking it for a different purpose, but that's for a different day.
Okay. I'll just, okay, let's just suppose that that big development was either the Googles or the Facebooks, Amazon, and I look back and I think, not a single one of those three people, three companies chose their location in Papillion because of that incentive. They chose it because it was Papillion. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job, Nancy, and really do appreciate it. And again, that award that was mentioned, the report that is voluntarily put together, that's in addition to the regular audit report. And there is a copy of that. It's on the website for the public to see. The intent of that program is to do an additional report that's probably more towards transparency and readability is a lot of what they look for. And then, it's reviewed, peer-reviewed at a national level and scored and that's what determines if you get the award or not. And again, 11, 12 years in a row, we've gotten that award. So, congratulations and thank you. And for the public, it's out on the website. I think all the years are out there. So, thank you. Administrator's report, Ms. Powers.
Thank you. And I just want to echo the thank you, Nancy, that the, that the council and Mayor Black gave you, you and your professional staff. I really appreciate it. And Rob, congratulations to you as well. Bill, we'll get to you next time. So, a huge thank you to the library staff. They put on their first annual Library Con event on March 25. It was a very successful event. It was really exciting. You never know how popular these new events are going to be and I would say, at least me personally, it exceeded expectations. So, thank you, Matt, to his team. And another huge thank you goes to the recreation staff. They held on April 1, their annual extravaganza Easter egg hunt and again, another successful community event. And it's these type of community events that really make Papillion special. So, thank you to, to all of our staff that make that possible. And on April 18, the Public Facilities Committee will be reviewing the RFPs for an architect for a potential police department remodel project. The city received two RFPs as part of that. And the... plan is to use the construction manager-at-risk model to do that, the approach, if we move forward with the project. So, we're still in the planning stages, but we need to get an architect selected if we are to move forward with, with that process. And an official sign of spring is that Walnut Creek Campsites are now open. They're first come, first served, so they're open for the, for the year. And then another sign of spring is it's time to start spreading the word that the annual spring cleanup is at the end of this month. It's April twenty-fourth to the thirtieth, and so it's seven AM to five PM daily, like, like it's always been. And again, it's a joint effort with the city of La Vista and Papillion, and so it's open to, it's free to Papillion and La Vista residents and also Papillion water customers. They just have to bring proof that they're a water customer. And then there's more information on the city's website if anybody wants to know, if any resident asks you, asks you what can be dumped or not dumped. That's all, all that information's on our website. And then just a reminder that there's an F and A committee meeting tonight shortly after the council meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Sunday. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eighteen zero nes.
Motion passes. Next is Item D one, Ordinance nineteen eighty-seven. An ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to LI Limited Industrial for the property legally described as Tax Lot Twenty-seven and Tax Lot Twenty-nine, both located in Section Twenty-One Township fourteen north, range twelve east of the six PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner, South Ninety-Ninth Street and Portal Road. The applicant is Aaron Hart Griffin and Associates, LJI Edition. Is there a Councilman that will introduce?
Introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. D two, Ordinance nineteen ninety-four, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, Chapter One Hundred. Currently titled Buildings Unsafe to be amended to be titled Property Maintenance, to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code twenty-eighteen edition with local amendments, to adopt procedures for enforcement and appeal, to repeal Chapter eighty-nine entitled Brush Grass and Weeds, and Chapter one thirty-seven entitled Nuisances, to amend Chapter nine and Sections ninety-two dash one and ninety-two dash nine to define the, to define the code official, and to provide for a Board of Appeals, to move Section one thirty-seven four regarding plastic bags to Section one twenty-five twenty-four, to amend Chapter one eighty-four now entitled Abandoned Vehicles, to amend Chapter two oh six to include references to nuisances under Chapter one hundred, to repeal the amended sections as previously acted, and to provide for an effective date. All summarized is the Property Maintenance Code. Is there a council member that will introduce?
Introduce.
Introduced by Councilwoman Klug. F one, Ordinance nineteen eighty-nine, an ordinance to annex certain real estate to the city of Papillion, Nebraska, and to provide for an effective date. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance nineteen eighty-nine?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Fanslow. Any discussion? Mr. Memgarden.
I just wanted to pick, to note that this is an annexation that is different than what we typically do. We are just simply annexing some areas that are either developed, will be developed, et cetera, and have no population, have no cost to us, slightly different than most of the annexations we typically do. I think it's an excellent thing to do. I commend the staff for bringing it up. I hope we get to do it again in the future. These are the kinds of annexations the taxpayers really ought to like, because it brings somebody into the city without any additional cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Eighteen zero nes.
Motion passes. Related item, Ordinance nineteen ninety, an ordinance to change the official zoning map of the city of Papillion in accordance with Section two oh five thirty-two, other Papillion Municipal Code, to adopt a zoning map and to apply existing or future zoning regulations, property use regulations, building ordinances, electrical ordinances, plumbing ordinances, and all other regulatory ordinances of the city of Papillion pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute sixteen nine oh one, and to provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that will introduce motion, I mean, not introduce, is there a motion to approve Ordinance nineteen ninety?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Memgarden, second by Councilman Sunday. Any more discussion? Please vote.
Eighteen zero nes.
Motion passes. F three, Resolution R twenty-three zero zero five zero, a resolution to approve an amendment to the inter-local agreement related to the provision of animal control services by the Nebraska Humane Society. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-three zero zero five zero?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eighteen zero nes.
Motion passes. F four, Resolution R twenty-three zero zero five two. It's a public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve the First Amendment to the North Shore Two subdivision agreement. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Proponents, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Patrick Sullivan, representing both the developer and the district. We've just had some additional expenses, but we've also had some additional valuation, and this is probably a case where we're underselling and over-delivering, because the houses are actually averaging about seventy-five to eighty-five thousand more than what we're putting in our estimate. So, should be in good shape.
Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-three zero zero five two? Motion by Councilman Stube?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion?
Close the public hearing.
Please vote. Oh, I'll close the public hearing at the same time. Please vote.
Eighteen zero nes.
Motion passes. F five, Resolution R twenty-three zero zero five three, a resolution to approve Ronald J. Dupell as the corporate manager for American Legion Post Thirty-two for their Class C liquor license. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-three zero zero five three?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Klug?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? Is the applicant here? Okay. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eighteen zero nes.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items, committee reports. I think the only one that's met is audit ad hoc. You were elected chair. Anything to share?
No, not really. Everything we heard, you heard again this evening in the presentation from Nancy and Amy. So, just want to say again to Nancy, thank you very much for all the effort throughout the entire year, watching out for our fiscal abilities and what we do here in the city, and keeping us moving forward in such a positive way.
And again, just education for the public. We have a committee of four council members for the audit, and my philosophy on that is we mix it up every single year. Two members from the prior year carry over to the next year, so there's some consistency, but then also put two new members on it, so it's a different set of eyes, and it's not the same four people looking at the books all of the time. So, some accountability in there. So, thank you very much for all that work. Any comments from the floor? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Edward Weniger, seventeen oh nine, Ridgewood Drive. I won't take long. I just wanted to explain the information I placed at each of your seats earlier. This is only a partial list of the pornography that can be found in our schools here. It is not complete, just a sampling. I implore you to read the entire document from end to end, and as you are reading, remember that these materials are being provided to the children you were elected to protect, potentially your children or grandchildren. I understand you aren't directly responsible for what goes on in the Papillion-La Vista School District, but you are accountable for what goes on in this town, and it will likely become an issue in the November twenty-twenty-four election. Constituents will be watching. There are going to be two sides. I hope you will stand on the side that is against our children being sexualized and exposed to child pornography. This transcends political party, and there are a lot of other parents in our town who will factor this into their voting decisions. Do you really want to fight for the victimization of our kids? The next time Dr. Rickley comes to ask you to support his one hundred and thirty million dollar bond, I hope you will first ask him what portion of the money will go towards the distribution of obscene materials, as you will see evidence of in the report I gave you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Council comments? Just a couple things from the last couple of weeks. One, one quick note on the comment that was just made. I believe, and I'm not familiar with it, but I've heard about it, the school district does have a policy that if anybody is concerned about any books or materials in the library, they do have a formal appeal process where that can be reviewed. I don't know what that process is, but reach out to the school district if you want to investigate that. We also have some students with us from Mr. Keller's class, and you all have to come up and introduce yourselves, and we will wait, so you have to do it. There you go. And you can just keep coming up.
I'm Jed Sunday from Mr. Keller's class.
Sunday?
Yep.
Like, Sunday?
Yep.
How did, how did he do?
How did he do?
I'm Gavin Milkie from Mr. Keller's class as well.
Milkie?
Yes.
Now, you, you just got your Eagle Scout, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's a big, that's a big deal.
Yes. My project was at the Walnut Creek campground. It was the fire pit that was built along with the benches, and my ceremony is going to be coming up at the end of the month.
Well, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody, any other students from Mr. Keller's class? Well, thank you again for doing that. Last couple of weeks, nothing major. The Sarpy City's wastewater agency met. Most of that was routine. I don't think there's anything to really report out from there. The Grow Sarpy, the Economic Development Corporation, had its board meeting. Most of that was just Mr. Rooks who presented at us, who presented at the last council meeting to us, introduced himself to the board, and then if people remember Tim Burke, who was the president of OPPD, he's a Papillion resident, he was recently named as the interim CEO of the Omaha Chamber, and so he was down talking about his role as well. So, that's mainly what the Grow Sarpy board meeting was, and then United Cities had its regular meeting. And really, that's just monitoring what's going on in the legislature right now, and they're really not doing anything, because they're kind of paralyzed. So, there wasn't much to report out there either. But it is just another good reminder, if there is specific legislation that you're interested in, now is a good time to actually be bringing that up, because as long as they're in session, we could drop some seeds of influence down there, but then we can work, work on those items over the summer and get them introduced into the next session. So, let us know if there's any legislative items. Just a couple things coming up. Ms. Powers mentioned the cleanup days on the twenty-fourth to the thirtieth. It's going to be from seven in the morning to five in the afternoon. ALO Construction, if you've got constituents asking about ALO fiber, I think it's next week or the week after, they're going to have a construction kickoff meeting, and I think they've already started some communication into the, into the community about what their plans are. The best thing there is on their website, they have a specific Papillion page, and a resident can go on and say, and subscribe to that page, and they will get probably the latest, greatest information, more so than even calling us for information. So, encourage them to do that. We have another new little restaurant open in town, and they're going to have their ribbon cutting on the twenty-eighth. It's called Wimby's. It was a food truck that's moved into an actual brick and mortar store. It's over on Seventy-second and Three Seventy. Very good, they're open. That's going to be on the twenty-eighth. And then on May twenty-first is the half marathon, the ten K. So, I think that's the major items coming up. We do have a closed session tonight for the students that are here with Mr. Keller's class. It is not very often that the entire council can get together outside of the public seeing what we're doing. There's really, the only time a majority of the council can get together is if we're going to talk about something related to real estate negotiations, because obviously you don't want to talk strategy in the public and tip your hand to the other side. So, we can, we can talk about strategy on negotiations. If there's a lawsuit of some kind, again, for strategy purposes, we can go get an update and talk strategy. And if there's a personnel item where we might need to talk about an individual and you don't want us disparage them in public, we can do that behind closed doors as well. Whenever we have a closed session, we need to take a vote to go into closed session. We need to state publicly who's going to be in the closed session. Nobody else can go in other than those. We can only talk about what we say we're going to talk about, and if we talk about something else, it's actually a misdemeanor crime, and then when we come out of closed session, we can't talk about what we talked about. And then we actually have to take another vote and certify that we talked about only what we were supposed to talk about. So, we are having a closed session tonight. So, is there a motion to go into closed session to protect the public interest to discuss contract negotiations and potential litigation?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eighteen zero nes.
And I'll restate for the record, the purpose of the closed session is only to discuss contract negotiations and potential litigation. Closed session will include the mayor, city council, city administrator, deputy city administrator, deputy administrator of Community Development, city clerk, assistant city attorney, police chief, and human resources director. I'll restate, the only topics discussed in closed session were contract negotiations and potential litigation. Is there a motion to come out of closed session? Motion by Mr. Fanslow, second by Mr., by Ms. Klug. Please vote.
I haven't closed that vote yet.
Motion to adjourn?
No, no, no.
Motion by--
What, what, what?
I haven't closed that vote yet.
You haven't closed that vote.
Eighteen zero nes.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Sunday, I think. Please vote.
Hi.
Mr. Ingberg.
And Mr. Memgarden.
Eighteen zero nes.
We are adjourned.